Review and disposition.
I have nothing for personnel, so you can cross that off. I don't have a non-public.
Great. Minutes from January seventeenth. Unless there are any objections. Do we, we need to vote on that, don't we?
Yep.
All right. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes, please? Second?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. Discussion items, new course proposals?
Yeah, so Janet is here tonight to go over a few non-budgetary impact course proposals. So we have been talking about all year about offering additional courses that are helpful for college and career readiness. So we are getting creative with the current, some of the current staff we have as well. And I'll have Janet take it over from there. Janet?
Yeah, so like Kat said, we've been talking about some new course offers from current staff, none that have the budgetary impact that have been previously discussed. But some which teachers have come forth with some interest or different thoughts about the way they're currently delivering some of their curriculum or some curriculum that's in some ways brand new. So if you remember back in the fall, we talked about digital illustration with Lynn Sandborn. She's looking to take some computer graphics curriculum and divide it in half. And then first aid and safety, we talked about in the fall as well. So what's in front of you is what has come to us since. And we haven't quite got into this conversation because we had a few other agenda items ahead of this. But this is, these are some new courses that are, have been brought to us both by teachers and one I'll highlight in the middle for you, personal financial literacy. So that's been a technical advisement from the Department of Ed.
It's a new law.
It's a new law. It doesn't, it's not, it's not part of graduation requirement and we don't anticipate it being. But it's been recommended or been required that we offer that class. So that course description right there is, is how that will sound and look. Right now, the way we're going to offer that is to students who have completed their three math requirements. We feel it's mostly an upper class interest course. We feel like it's mostly targeted at seniors. But there certainly could be a few underclassmen who have reached their three required math, Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry earlier than senior year and certainly they could take that as an elective. And then Mr. Smith is sort of represented here in two different places. So currently for seniors, one of their English options is Brit Lit. And he came to us a few months ago with some thoughts about offering some writing courses. Previously, creative writing and fancy writing have been offered. And so he took a little different spin on those and he developed both of those writers' classes, Writers and Artists, kind of combining that writing and art history idea. And then he took another, and then he took another spin on it and he did Writers and Scientists and he's looking at combining American Studies and English. And what it gives seniors an option to do is split their senior English between a half year of Brit Lit and a half year of writing or vice versa. So again, we've talked about increasing some flexibility and increasing some offerings and that is, is, will be targeted towards seniors or again, some upper class juniors who have met some of those prerequisites. So, so we're super excited about that. He is also going to work on some summer curriculum development with us this summer and he's really, he seems really invested in that opportunity. And then you'll see three different classes and they're all titled with Unified, Unified Wellness, Unified Art, Unified PE. And as you know, there's a pretty well-developed unified culture and climate here, which is super exciting. So what Danae and Mary Boyle and Ashley Loffenberg and Crystal Kennedy have done is they'd like to take that opportunity and bring it into the classroom. So they have been visiting schools around the state, particularly in Dover where they offer some of these unified opportunities in the classroom. And so what they're going to do is develop some curriculum again this summer with us around giving both uni, both peers and students the opportunity to come together in art, PE, and wellness. So for some kids, it'll be an elective and for some kids, it will fill that graduation requirement depending on your graduation track. And then the last one is exploratory French and Spanish. I know years ago it was something like conversational Spanish. So both the languages are interested in offering a class to kids who aren't necessarily looking for a three-year track of language, but are interested in culture, are interested in language, are interested in another elective versus a study hall. You know, so we're trying to put things on the map for kids that they can be, be engaged in a class versus in a study hall. So that is one, that's another one that doesn't have a prerequisite. It can be anybody. And it's, it's really going to be focused around culture and getting kids exposed to both French and Spanish. And lastly, 3D modeling. Thank you. So, you know, again, we have, we have stuff represented here that's a little bit higher level, but we also wanted to target some of those freshmen. So coming in, the 3D modeling will be an elective and under drafting. And again, Kyle Reed is our expert in that area and he'll do everything from that 3D design to 3D printing, laser additional design. I won't get into it because I really don't know. But it's already super popular. So we started, kids have started to do a lot of requests and met with the eighth graders, like I said, I think, last month. And so there's, there's really some interest around that class. So we'll see, we'll see how that plays out in a few weeks. Questions you have about any of, any of that? Yeah?
These to be approved for introduction to make them available for the fall?
We'd like to make them available for the fall. Yeah. Because we have another bigger class coming in and we would like to have them pushed forward to that, to the fall.
And if I made this wrong? We've talked in the recent past about the need for more electives and to get kids out of study halls. Will this help that also?
Yes, because if, if you look at writers and the writers and the Brit Lit, a senior could take Brit Lit all year and then elect a writing class. So they, they can really play around with, and then a student could be taking pre-calc honors as a, as a junior, senior and elect personal financial and literacy. So these aren't replacing all of those requirements or all, you know, but they're, they can add on. Or in some cases, kids need a fourth year of math experience. If you're not taking high level college-bound math, personal financial literacy is something we think is important to offer kids as their fourth math experience.
Any other, oh Barbara?
The writers. Is it necessary that, what, the science, please, excuse me? And take one and not the other?
Yeah. They could also take Brit Lit one or two and not take, it's not necessarily in a sequence or tied to one another. They're independent of each other.
Yeah, great question.
Anybody else? Okay. And do we need it on to the, moved on to the full board?
If you're comfortable doing so, yeah.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to move these courses on to the full board for a vote?
You'll make a motion.
Okay. Second? Barbara? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Abstaining?
Okay. Thank you. Great.
Teaching and learning update?
Yeah, so just quickly, Janet's going to review. So, so we really shifted the role of the assistant principal to really oversee curriculum instruction and assessment. And you negotiated a new contract that has some pieces of that laid out as far as how we're moving forward with the NIAS plan and the improvement plan that is kind of installed through COVID. So really Janet has taken the lead with your instructional coordinators to implement that plan. So I just wanted to have her, just give you a quick update on how that's going.
Yeah, so there's five currently in place and we meet every other day. And we've been doing so since August. So we've gotten a lot of momentum. What we've done so far is really laid out some curriculum design and discovery during their teacher in-service days or these four delayed openings that were outlined in the contract. We did move one due to the snow days in January that sort of backed up semester one, semester two. So we're looking ahead at two more delayed openings. And really what we're leading teachers to do is to think about designing curriculum collaboratively. And they're using a particular framework that really has some intentional cognitive complexity. So we really want kids to be gaining knowledge and skills and then we want kids to go to understandings. And then what we really want kids to do is walk across the stage with skills they can transfer to new situations. And so what we're doing is we're kind of taking the curriculum maps that we've, that have been developed and scope and sequences that have been spent a lot of time with. And we're asking teachers to further develop their instruction in unit planning and to take that cognitive complexity all the way to the end to transfer. So there's been some training that had been done prior to me getting here, which was super helpful. And I knew the framework. And so what we're trying to do is kind of meet in the middle, get people in situations and off, and with collective time together to develop some of these units. And then hopefully next year to have the opportunity to teach the units and then see how the teaching went and how is it different and did it do what we wanted it to do? So it's been, it's been a lot of front load of work just to sort of get this team working cohesively and then to get this faculty just acclimated to having instructional coordinators again and having delayed openings. So it's kind of a lot of new. But I feel like we're really in a good place. We're super excited about the time we have left. And recently, at the last faculty meeting, I had a chance to present the opportunity for a summer curriculum opportunity. We are a district that is afforded title to a grant money. And I landed in a spot where it hadn't, some of it hadn't been previously spent because no one was here to spend it. And it's such a good use of resources because we can get teachers together outside of the day, outside of coaching assignments, outside of kid duty and get them three days in the summer where they can really just focus on the craft. So we're really excited to offer two sessions this summer. One will be at the end of June and one will be the week before we come back in August. And so far, I presented it yesterday and I think I have 13 people interested. So I, I think there's some great momentum. That tells me that people are invested in the work. And so hopefully I'll be able to present a few units to you folks, maybe, you know, sometime next year so you can kind of see how it looks on paper and then maybe some evidences of student work.
When you're talking about developing units, you're talking about the collaborative teaching units that, that will be among different disciplines?
Yeah, so we really want, so I'll just use a really simple example. As we, you know, someone, if the math, who's ever teaching Algebra I, we want them to develop their units. But it's really powerful to develop units with others because everyone brings something to the table, particularly when they're coming at it from the same discipline. We practiced with that opportunity in January during our full teacher in-service day. Someone in the group was the content expert and the rest of them were teammates and they developed one unit from a discipline together. And it's really interesting to see people struggle with, wait, what, what do I want them to know on the end of this and how am I going to get there? And collectively, it's a really powerful exercise in designing curriculum.
And if, there are, there are guidelines as to exactly what the outcomes are supposed to be?
Well, we're always in a standards-based world, right? So we're backing off of our standards. So we know what the outcome is. But how we transfer standards to new situations is sort of what the goal is. So they essentially, they started writing transfer goals in September. So coming out of Algebra, what's important for kids to know when they leave here? What do you need for Algebra II and what is, what is, what's the purpose of Algebra in life? So there's kind of two discipline transfers and like interdisciplinary. It's how does Algebra I help me moving on? Yeah.
Does anyone else have, sorry, I took the floor on that. Any other?
I have another question. The delayed openings that you were referring to, is that for the instructional coordinators to figure this out or is it for all the teachers?
It's for, so it's for the teachers.
Okay.
The instructional coordinators have time built into their day according to the contract. The teachers come in and the kids come in on a two-hour delay. So the teachers come in four times currently this year at 7:30 and we work until 9:15. And that's their collective time together.
And then some summer sessions as well?
And then it's going to be sort of replicated this summer, end of June and in August. Yep.
Any other questions? Okay. And does, that's just an update? It's not a proposal we need to?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
And any other business?
No other business.
I have a question on the personal financial literacy. Three math classes, senior level. There are a lot of students that probably will benefit from this that may not be on that kind of track.
Yeah.
Is there going to be another version or something?
Yeah, so the way the course requests go is we build them into the course catalog in the Power School system. And then kids are currently meeting, they've met as a class, as a junior class, as a sophomore class, and then they meet individually with their school counselors. So what will happen is we will make decisions on how many sections of personal financial literacy we're going to offer based on how many kids are requesting it. So it may be that we have enough sophomores that have met those prerequisites that we open up a class that's a little bit more geared to an underclassman kind of a kid. But right now, just to start, sometimes when you start something new, you're trying to just target a group to get it on the books and see what happens. But kids are, kids are seeing it in the course catalog right now. And we'll start that process when we come back from February break.
Would there be anything in there that might help a person construct a resume or fill out a job application or book application or something like that so they could just at least see the process?
Yeah, yeah. I don't know about resume. That seems like more like writing. But certainly like taxes, student loans, financial security.
Car loans.
Car loans, all of that, yes. And currently, right now, there's a unit top, there's a unit with that curriculum in economics. So there is some expertise in the building already. And they are getting it as a unit in a class, but they're not getting it as a class. Yeah. Yeah.
Barbara?
So on the same topic, personal finance. This description, is that from the state?
Yes.
So it's going to be pretty uniform throughout the state?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And I'm on a principal's call monthly and they're all sort of in design mode right now. So we'll get a lot of, I'll be able to navigate that and ask a lot of questions to see how it's going. Yeah.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to adjourn the teaching and learning committee?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, it being past 5:15. School operations committee, the session, a general review and disposition. Any changes?
Uh, no changes.
Okay, minutes of January seventeenth. Do I hear a motion to approve? Are there any changes anybody wants to make on them or anything?
Any changes?
Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we go on to discussion items, public comment policy. This is the second meeting. After this goes to the board.
Yeah, it's up to you. So last time, we wanted to take them up to look at it. We have discussed this time and time again of whether to have a policy, whether or not to have a policy. And it seems like the interest is in to have a little bit more structure to our public comment policy from the board. So feel free to give comments or changes. Remember, this is from the New Hampshire School Boards Association. It did come out pretty recently, given a lot of the issues that came up during COVID. So it's, it's up to you. Some boards have policies, some don't. So, and it's a mix across this SAU, as you can imagine.
Peter, I have a couple of comments.
Okay.
Yep.
First of all, I, just a couple, if I'm taking a look at the policy, a couple of word changes in B1. It's, it looks like it's hodgepodge together. The board says so, where it says shall and shall twice in B1. We use will through the whole rest of the document. Kind of the modern trend is to not use shall but to use will instead. It's kind of less in your face.
Shall is stronger, isn't it?
Uh, they mean the same thing. Shall, will, must, but kind of more modern trend is to use will instead of shall. And they'd use will in the whole rest of the document. So kind of my thing is to be consistent. Use shall the whole thing or use will the whole thing. So I would suggest changing that. Members of the public will not speak. Shall sounds to me like you're taking out a ruler and beating their hands. And maybe you oughtn't. But, and then chair will apply. I just, I think they use will through the whole rest of the document. The second general comment I have is I do, I, I'm struggling with this a little bit. I, I generally like structure and that type of thing, but until, you know, the whole COVID thing, this has never been an issue with the board since I've been on the lever. And I, I like to think that members of the public always are always welcome to come and speak and to not have somebody hold a stopwatch to three minutes, right? Two and a half minutes, three and a half minutes, four minutes. So kind of my concern is that if, if we want to go this route, if you have a policy, you apply the policy. And if you're not going to apply the policy consistently and evenly in something, don't have a policy. That's kind of the way I look at it. So if you're going to do it, everyone has to be on board that three minutes, stopwatch, you're going to get warned, you're done. I just, I just throw that out there because that's a real consideration. I kind of, one of the things I've always liked about this community is kind of where a little more, this isn't like a large city. It's not like we have people lining up at the door to come in, not like some of them you see on TV, right? Where they get in with those types of things. Sure, we have some, more people come for, for certain issues like during COVID and things, but I, I just struggle with whether we actually need this or want this.
The reason I believe that we have this was on occasion, people filibuster practically. I mean, they're on 20, 25 minutes and we don't have a mechanism to end it.
Yep.
So typically, a chair can call those shots at the beginning of the meeting. The chair really makes up their own rules. And if the chair decided, you could do anything, you know, right? It's like a moderator of a district meeting. You could say, you have three minutes. And then the chair manages that. But that goes to sole control of the chair.
So do we need this in place to have?
This is not a required policy. This came up through board members wanting to look at a possible policy. So it's not required. It's something that helped, that, that may or may not.
So we don't have to have this, Christie can say at the beginning, well, we're going to try to keep the comments to four minutes and no longer. We don't have to have this in place to say that?
It's not required. It's not a required policy.
You could do, I mean, you could do it in a case-by-case basis. This is one of these issues where you have 40 people here. You can say at the beginning of the meeting, we're going to limit comments to three minutes per person just because of the sheer number of people.
Right.
But as if we adopt it, we can always not adopt. We can always adopt this and not adopt it at some point if we want to. But the way it's set up, if, if we have two, two people here tonight, they're limited to three minutes each. Right?
Right.
So that's, I'm just trying to throw out, we, this is things we should consider before we do.
I think that that, what she suggested makes more sense. You know, we, if we're going to cut football, this place would have. And we have to have some way to restrict the time to, but I don't.
Don't say that online.
But I don't. I don't want to be in a situation where someone just goes on and on and on.
Right, right.
So the.
And you want to plan if, if, if somebody, like, so maybe it's, if you want to leave it to the chair, maybe it's more training around the chair, like as far as, or what the board's intent is maybe, as far as, you know, do you want a time limit when you have 50 people here? Or even state the, the purpose of public comment. Because I, I know a lot of what I receive in my office is after a meeting, if somebody doesn't feel heard. They're expecting to get into a conversation or to have an answer to something. And most of the time, the board is unaware of whatever the topic may be because we haven't had the chance to give you that information. It's something that maybe happened in school. It, you know, rumor has it that this is going to be talked about and 30 people show up and this is what we're going to, which is fine. But it puts you in a, you know, it's always under advisement. So that's the other purpose of like the chair. If, if the chair isn't going to be in charge, you know, hey, keep it to agenda items or not, keep, want a time limit or not. I mean, it's, it's pretty flexible. And really, we've had a roller coaster of participation. And it's really around hot topics, masking, you know, gender identity or, you know, a co-curricular club that all of a sudden you get 50 people in based on hearsay. And, and so it's, it's important for the public to be heard. But I think it's, some boards have gone to this, some have not. And I think it's just a matter of, if you have a chair that is able to control that, then I think it's fine to go without too.
I like the idea. I think we should have a policy in place. And I'd like it to be more open-ended so, you know, so the chair can determine. I mean, if we have 50 people, I have no problem sitting and listening to them talk. I don't care how long it takes.
Yeah.
But we also need the policy in case it gets out of hand. So we can refer to it. But I think it should be up to the chair. But I think we need a policy of some sort.
If, if we adopt this policy though, I don't think it's up to the chair to, like for instance, if there's two, two people here today that want to speak, right? And if we adopt this policy, I don't think the chair has the authority to say, since we have two people here today, we're going to suspend the three minutes.
Right.
You can all vote on it, I guess. But that's going to put that affirmatively. So which way do you want to go? Do you want to have the default policy and then, you know, and then it all just get to the thing where, well, if you're, if you're doing that every single meeting, except for the one every three years where there's going to be 100 people there, then it's the old, you know, Swiss cheese policy. It's got so many holes in it, why even have the policy anymore?
Right.
So I just, I, I thought about this a little bit. I'm, I could look with it either way. And maybe the best thing is to, since this is just at the committee level, which is four of us, maybe the best thing is to bump it up to the full board for, for a more thorough discussion at the next meeting so that other people get to vote on it.
I think something else to consider is it doesn't have to be the NHSBA. This is, this includes every scenario possible that you would get into. It could be like one of our smaller boards just have like five guidelines that they go by. We'll stick to agenda items. We'll approximately be three to five minutes. We'll be kind and respectful. You know, just kind of general guidelines as far as that instead of this. But this is, this is the boilerplate that came right out of those meetings before that were, that were at, controlling how to get a piece of ball.
Well, sure. And there were a lot of places. I mean, they saw it on YouTube, right?
Yeah.
Like, but like C9 is what you're talking about where reminding people that the board doesn't necessarily respond because we haven't deliberated on it and no individual person can speak for the board. But nobody from the public's going to read this before they come in. Is anyone from the public going to read this document before they come in?
I mean, maybe five. I could pick up a few that might, yeah.
Right, but most of the people aren't. So that's where the reminder for the chair comes in.
Yes.
At the beginning, we're going to, you know, we're going to do this. And also too, just want to give you a heads up, we're not going to get any question and answer.
Right. So that's typical of any, any board that has a policy. The chair does say at the beginning, just a reminder of our policy. Everyone gets one chance to speak. Like you can't come up multiple times. Sometimes it's one of the rules. You have a few minutes. Please state your name and residence and, and either keep to the agenda or go. And we're, just remember, we'll take it under advisement. It's not a chance for you to speak to the audience. It's a chance for you to address the board. Take it under advisement and go. Because that's what, that's when it gets a little muddy, when, when audience members start talking to each other or, you know, and then it becomes an argument there. It's really not, you're just, you're just viewing what the conversation is. So.
Peter, would you take a non-member, non-committee member?
Can you take a non-member, non-committee member?
Sure.
I have, I, I agree with Sam, maybe it ought to go to the full board to have that discussion. I have a different perspective in that I believe policies can keep the board out of getting into trouble because when you get, oftentimes when someone's going to want to speak in a prolonged timeframe, they get emotional. And if you at least have the policy to fall back on to say, we're not being arbitrary or capricious in how we're dealing by saying you're limited. And I, I think the comment of, of three minutes, I, I would have to wonder, could, could you even say, generally speaking, individual speakers will be given three minutes so that there's at least a window there for some. But I just think that having seen and read in the newspapers about some of the controversial topics, and I don't see them going away, that it, in my mind, it's better to have something than not. And you, you never know when your turn is going to come for someone to be, you know, have a controversial topic and you don't want to add to that because you don't have the parameters defined as to how you're going, how you're going to deal with it. I mean, I understand we ought to have somehow to include the flexibility that we would like and are accustomed to. But I, I mean, I've been in meetings where we had to have police and it was in the Lakes region. I mean, it wasn't, you know, Manchester or, or, you know, big city Nashville, big city environment. And it can only take one or two individuals to throw things awry. And, you know, and sometimes that puts the board chair in a difficult position if they have to act in a way that's, you know, like, this is what I want to see, as opposed to having guidelines in place. So I, I have a, a little different perspective on, on that one, but, so I, I would maybe say bring it to the full board.
Fine.
If we didn't have a policy in place and things got out of hand or a board member felt like it was getting out of hand, how would they handle it to get it to stop?
So a board member can always say point of order to the chair. I mean, I think that's sometimes, but sometimes you get caught. You've all been there in the moment where you're like, am I supposed to say something? Am I not supposed to say something? You know, it just gets a little more heated. But a board member at any time can call point of order to, and say why. I mean, I know a couple of you have done it before, point of order, this, you know, and, and say the reason for it and, you know, so.
Barbara?
Yes, I also am a part of this committee, okay?
Well, you're, you're getting soft Peter.
She only got three minutes.
I also would like to see this go before the full board and have a broader discussion on it. I've listened to all of the different perspectives. I see the limiting of the time, but I also think that sometimes limiting is not friendly. We have always had an opportunity at the beginning of our board meetings and then again at the end. And I, I personally see the value in both of those. Some people can't make it at the beginning, but they come when they can, so at least they're there for the end. Some people want to be there at the beginning and then they have such hurried lives they have to leave. So leaving the opportunity for both the beginning and then the end is one of the issues, one of the issues. The other one is we rarely have numerous people at our meetings. I would like not to disinterest them in coming if we limit them and they can't speak.
Right.
And I like a lot of what's in this particular policy, but I think we can come up with something better if we discuss it as a full board.
And we're only talking full, this would be implemented for full boards because it's not required to do public comment during committee work.
Any other comments? Do I hear a motion to bring this to the full board?
With will in it or shall?
Will in it.
Okay.
Will in it.
If, if invention passes later, if invention passes at the full board later, I would prefer it as will in it. I'll, I'll make that motion to bring it to the full board.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All who's in favor, can you signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Agreed. Go to the full board. And I reckon we don't have personnel.
That is correct.
Wow. Do I hear a motion to, excuse me, do you have anything you want to say from the audience?
Yeah, actually, I think Sarah, um, you've been talking about your, your policy around public comments. First of all, I can very much appreciate the beginning and end, not necessarily because I can't make part of the time. Sometimes when you're discussing something during a meeting, I want to give feedback and I, there's not a second opportunity, then I don't have that opportunity. And then as you're discussing ways to make it easy for the public to participate, I have a lot of thoughts around that. Just wondering if any of you have been to any of the other school boards and seen how they run things and sort of gotten any ideas there? Some of the things that I really like is that they have name tags a lot. I mean, at least I have taken two right now. It would be awesome if I actually knew who all of you were and what towns you were from, but at this point, I know four names around this table. And so that would be amazing. Five o'clock, I don't know if you noticed, it's really challenging for people that work because often our jobs end right at five o'clock. A lot of the other boards meet a little bit later and that's a lot easier to make. I see not a lot more participation, but a little more participation if it's a little bit easier to catch the times. And then finally, making sure that all of this information is posted and a way that we can find it. For example, the district meeting time changed and nobody knew about it and it wasn't on the website. And so it was sort of a scramble to make sure that we could make it on time. And so any way that you can publicize or make known your stuff better than just posting it on the front door would be amazing because probably not a lot of people swing by the school to see the published thing on the door. Just some feedback for making it helpful for the public.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, do you know of comments? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All who's in favor of adjourned, can you signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Agreed? One.